Ready? I'd like to call the City of North St. Paul Council meeting to order for January 18th at this time. Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everybody. At this time, Jenny, if you can take the roll.
Here.
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 Here. Coram is present. This time, motion to adopt the agenda. Moved by Councilmember Peterson.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Wong. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. This time, we do have the consent agenda, and I'm going to turn it over to City Manager Stark.
Thank you, Mayor Furlong, and Councilmembers. For those watching from home, the consent agenda contains several separate items which are acted upon by the City Council in one motion. Once the consent agenda has been approved, the individual items and recommended actions have also been approved, and no further action would be necessary. However, any City Council member may request that an item be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda for further discussion. Tonight, we have nine items on the consent agenda. Item A, the January 4th, 2022 workshop minutes. Item B, the January 4th, 2022 regular meeting minutes. Item C, general claims. Item D, HRA claims. Item E, EDA claims. Item F, the 2021 annual review of the attendance of members of boards and commissions. Item G, the 2022 commission appointments. Item H, a resolution approving acceptance of donations received in December of 2021. And finally, item I, building permit report from December 2021. And that concludes tonight's consent agenda.
This time, if any Councilmember would like to pull an item, they can do so at this time. Councilmember Thorson.
I'd like to pull item F and G.
We'll move those down to the general city business and action items, and that'll be E and F. Anybody else would like to pull any item? At this time, motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Thorson.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Cole. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and that will, those two items will be brought down, and the consent agenda is passed then. At this time, the meeting is open to the public. This time, if anybody would like to... In the public, anybody on Zoom? Will be on Zoom? Ron, do you want to talk at all, or? Okay. Nobody for the open forum part, so at this time, city business action items, and I'll turn it over to City Manager Stark.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers. The first item under city business is the 2022 North St. Paul History Cruisers Car Show Memorandum of Understanding. The North St. Paul History Cruisers are seeking city approvals to conduct their 29th annual Friday night car show in the community. Show organizers estimate that the show typically includes 800 to 1100 pre-1976 classic cars and attracts 5,000 to 7,000 people on a normal day, a normal Friday. If they have a special guest, it could attract up to 10,000 people. This event provides a significant benefit to area businesses, especially establishments on or around 7th Avenue that offer food and beverages. In 2021, the impact of COVID and a public safety concern in a neighboring community resulted in only 10 shows being held instead of the 15 that had been planned at the beginning of the season. In 2022, organizers are planning on holding their first car show on June 4th and concluding on September 24th, and there would be a week of hiatus on June 17th to coincide with the Back to the 50s Car Show at the fairgrounds. The city provides assistance to the car show in a number of ways. We allow them to order portable toilets on the city's account at our negotiated rate. We provide a special police patrol, and Public Works crews provide setup for parking and traffic control equipment. According to the attached memorandum of understanding, the History Cruisers will reimburse the city for these costs, up to $12,275 for the year, and that's a 3% increase of over what they had reimbursed the city for last year. Construction plan on 7th Avenue, particularly between 1st Street and Helen Street, may have some negative impacts on the car show. City staff and the city engineer have made the History Cruisers aware of the construction plans, and we've met with them to discuss the impacts, how to mitigate the impacts, and how to communicate the impacts, not only to the History Cruisers members, but also to the area businesses that really rely on that business on Friday nights. We do have members of the History Cruisers here to answer any questions you might have of them, and with that, I would stand for any questions you might have.
First correction is, June 3rd is the start.
I'm sorry, I must have said the wrong date.
And September 16th. Is the end.
Good. Thank you.
With that, if, Bob, if you want to come up, or Bruce, if you want to come up, and if you got any questions for you, or... It's up to you. You can, you can say hi, and who you are, and we always love to see, we always love to hear from you.
One of the board members, and we thank the council for being with us all these years, and hopefully, we keep going forward. Construction's construction. Ain't the first time we've seen it.
So, yeah.
And it'll be a good year.
Good.
A lot of good people.
We thank you for all that you do, and your team does, so. Any questions? If not, the motion is for a resolution approving the 2022 memorandum of agreement between the City of North St. Paul and the North St. Paul History Cruisers to conduct the 2022 Friday night car shows.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Peterson.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Thorson. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. So, thank you all, and hopefully, you get the ball rolling.
Good weather.
And good weather, and... And I'll turn it over to City Manager Stark.
Thank you. Item B, under general business, is a requested rollover of executive leave. So, two weeks ago, at the January 4th City Council meeting, the City Council adopted a resolution that approved a pause on the policy regarding rollover caps, rollover caps on vacation leave for all employees. Since that time, it's been brought to my attention that there is another type of leave in the employee policy manual entitled executive leave. Executive leave in the manual says that this leave is because the job requirements of some salaried staff mean that they regularly work considerable more than 40 hours, and that the time frequently occurs during hours outside of the normal schedule. In recognition, the policy grants department heads, supervisors, and other salaried employees 48 hours of executive leave. There are currently seven employees that earn this type of leave. Because of the extraordinary issues facing staff in 2021, the two biggest being the impact of COVID, and then the turnover of the city manager and some other key positions, most of these employees were unable to use all of their executive leave. For example, I would tell you, and I know you heard two weeks ago, and before that, Public Works Director Richie was spending some time on the weekends, you know, on the roof of the community center. I believe he spent some time there again this weekend. So, just because of everything going on, Public Works Director Richie and Electric Utilities Director Frandl, neither of them were able to use their executive leave. So, I'm suggesting that a similar beaction, action be taken to the vacation rollover policy that you took last meeting. My recommended policy would be effective for a rollover cap of 24 hours, so 50% of what they earned of executive leave from 2021 into 2022 for eligible employees. So, with that, I would stand for any questions you might have. The 24 hours is a suggestion. You would certainly be welcome to discuss doing a different amount than that, but that's based on the vacation time people are accruing and the time people have in their banks. That was a number I thought was fair. With that, I would stand for any questions you might have.
Any questions for City Manager? If not, the motion is for a resolution approving the carryover from 2021 to 2022 of up to 24 hours executive leave for eligible employees. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Wong.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Thorson. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. City Manager Stark.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This next subject is the 2022 Street and Utility Improvement Project, the approval of plans and specifications, and order advertisements for the bids, and I would turn this over to City Engineer Morgan Dolly for presentation.
Thank you very much, John.
Welcome, Morgan.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm here before you tonight to review the 2022 Street and Utility Improvement Project, and some of the facts that go along with that, and basically, the action item in front of you tonight is a resolution in the packet that would authorize staff to go out for bids, basically advertise for bids, and we expect a bid opening of February 15th in presenting those bids either at the second meeting in February or the first meeting in March, depending on the timing of tabulation and correction for mathematical accuracy, that sort of thing. So, that's the timeframe on the bidding. Staff did a really good job, based on the late start, but trying to keep things moving and keep things early as possible in terms of trying to capture good pricing before contractors' schedules are full, so I'm pleased with the timing of this. And, but there are a couple of things to move through with the council before, you know, you consider that resolution and authorize advertising for bidding, and one specific thing I want to spend a little bit of time on with the council is the consideration for sidewalk addition on Ariel Street. So, I'll do a brief presentation. I'll mention some things with respect to the sidewalk and some of the public engagement and participation that went on at a virtual open house that we held last week, and certainly be able to answer any questions before we get into consideration for authorization for ad for bid, and then maybe giving some staff directions specific to that sidewalk addition on Ariel Street. So, I hope, am I sharing okay? Okay, so we have a PowerPoint slide here that'll just kind of help me move through things here. On your screen is the project location map, generally showing the areas that have been included. Now, what we've done is, as you may recall, late last year, we, council considered and approved a 2022 multiple project area, which is kind of the kickoff of the five-year capital improvement plan that the council adopted, also late in the year. What we've done is we tried to combine or package together, like, infrastructure improvements into one contract that would be awarded to a contractor, even though they're not in contiguous areas. So, what you're seeing on your screen here are three different areas in no specific order. They're numbered 1, 2, and 3. Area 1 is kind of centered around the downtown surface parking lot, the public parking lot behind K&amp;J. 6th, that's the short stub of 6th Avenue East up until you get to Charles, and then Charles Street was flagged for a maintenance overlay from 7th Avenue down to 4th Avenue, so that's the first portion. The second portion, or second area, is over by the high school, so that is primarily 10th Avenue. Between 2nd and 3rd, and then 2nd Street and 3rd Street, north up to 11th Avenue is that area. Again, as a reminder, the Independent School District 622 is planning and kicking off actually fairly soon. Addition and improvements to the high school campus as well, too, so these street and utility improvements are being coordinated with the things that they are going to do on their site. And finally, area 3 is Ariel Street, between the cul-de-sac, just north of Highway 36, north all the way to 17th Avenue, and then Flanders Road, 13th Avenue, 14th Avenue, and Spirit Hills Lane, which is the connector road between 13th and 14th, as shown on the map there. I'll mention that in this 2022 Street and Utility project that we're talking about here, that bid package, that does not include Ariel Street, but we're just talking about that from an improvement standpoint. The city of Maplewood is going to be including Ariel Street, since North St. Paul and Maplewood own that street jointly 50/50. They are going to be the contracting agency by agreement between the two cities, so I'll have a cooperative agreement or a joint powers agreement in front of you in the coming weeks, February, early March at the latest, that will kind of define that participation. Basically, the cost of the roadway for Ariel Street will be split 50/50 between the two cities, since the line goes right down the center of the roadway. But for Flanders, and 13th, and 14th, and Spirit Hills, because those are actually maintenance overlay streets, we're going to include that with this bid package separate, rather than put those all into the Maplewood thing. We wanted to have a little bit more control over that with our residents, so that's why those are organized in that fashion. So, just, I won't spend a lot of time on this, but what we're talking about in each one of these areas for area 1, certainly, the parking lot is going to be reconstructed. We're updating the parking lot striping and improving some of the efficiencies there. We're actually adding parking stalls, redoing some of the islands to make it better for Public Works to maintain these. City Electric is going to be redoing the lighting in the parking lot, and there will be some electric vehicle charging stations added into the parking lot as well, too. And then some changes on 6th Avenue and Charles are mostly just rehabilitating, milling and overlaying, or reclaiming the pavement with just some spot curb and gutter replacement. We're not really doing anything other than just focusing on the road in that area there. There is some, are some drainage issues, mostly within the parking lot, so the storm sewer is bad and not really kind of picking up all the bird baths, so we are going to redo some of that and actually enhance some of that storm sewer so that we have less standing water in those rain events in the parking lot. You can see here, just a real quick figure of kind of that area, the dark color is intending to represent basically the areas that are going to receive new pavement, so I didn't mention it before, but also the alley, the public alley that's behind those buildings that front on 7th Avenue, that will, those will be improved as well, too. And you can see here, Charles, and that little short piece of 6th Avenue extending out of the parking lot. In area 2, similar, not necessarily to the parking lot, but just with respect to the streets, the road pavement would be reclaimed. We would be replacing, in a spot replacement fashion, some of the curb and gutter, adding some curb and gutter on 10th Avenue there. We do have some drainage issues, and it's an older asphalt curb that is kind of falling apart, and so we would replace that with concrete curb, which will last much better, last longer, and actually convey the water more efficiently. And we're going to be doing some sidewalk repairs in that area as well, too. Just like with the parking lot, some storm sewer improvements to address the drainage, and we do have old water main that has a long history of having breaks and issues that Public Works have had to address, and so we are going to be pipe bursting and/or excavating to replace some of the water main all the way kind of around that area on 2nd Street and on 10th Avenue and on 3rd. So, those, that's actually one of the drivers for replacing this, is the history of water main breaks in and around the area. So, you can see on the schematic here that there's angled parking on the north side of 10th Avenue. It's worth noting that, because it's just a grassy boulevard on the south side of the street and a bituminous curb, we have the opportunity to actually make it easier for Public Works to remove snow through there. As we were working with Public Works on the project area, they mentioned it's really tough to get the plow through there because it's so tight when cars are parked in the angled spots, so we're just adding about 2 or 3 feet on the south side just to make it a little bit wider so that they can get through there more efficiently. And then on to area 3, as I mentioned, Ariel Street will be a part of the Maplewood project, but the road will be reclaimed and rehabilitated, so brand-new pavement, full depth, and then just spot curb and gutter repair on either side of the road. Again, all the way from the south cul-de-sac in kind of that commercial, or that non-residential area, all the way north up to 17th Avenue. And, as we'll talk in a little bit, there is the potential for a sidewalk connection on the north side of 11th Avenue, on the east side of the road, which is our side of the road, not Maplewood's, to extend from the sidewalk that's on 11th Avenue north all the way to 17th Avenue where there's also sidewalk existing right now. And then, as far as utilities, it's only focused on the water main south of 11th Avenue. Again, we have a lot of water main breaks through there, so we're going to replace that section of water main. The water main north of 11th Avenue is in good shape, much newer, and has performed better than what we're looking at on the south side. So, as I mentioned, those other streets, 13th, Flanders, 14th, Spirit Hills, those are maintenance overlays. Again, just spot curb replacement or edge replacement. We did have some questions from the public about Flanders, and why wouldn't we add curb and gutter now? Basically, for these maintenance overlays, overlay projects, we're not trying to change the character of the roadway or totally reset it. It's mostly about that pavement, so we're leaving that as a rural section. Sometimes, when you add curb and gutter, you wind up having to change the grades. Adding storm sewer makes it a much more costly and expensive project, so we're sticking with the intent and the spirit of that maintenance overlay, which is really just kind of interested in replacing that pavement and getting it back to a drivable, more functional kind of paved surface. With that, kind of a report on the costs. So, our capital improvement plan estimate and our estimated, or our final engineer's estimate actually came in fairly close. Right now, we're, if I rounded up, I guess, a little bit from 2.281 million to 2.3 million, that would be the approximate estimated project cost at this time, slightly higher, but very close to the capital improvement plan estimate. And what I will say is that we are still maintaining a contingency in there because the word on the street, or basically, the industry buzz right now is that construction costs are going to go up. We don't know exactly how much, but generally, in some cases, maybe 10%, with a combination of materials and labor and supply chain issues, and who knows what. So, we're trying, in terms of planning, we're trying to maintain that contingency. Hopefully, the bids come in good. Again, we're out early in 2022, so that gives us a good opportunity to take advantage of lower prices, but we'll have to see how they come in, and I'll report to council on that when we have bids. The, separate from this project, the joint improvements with the city of Maplewood would be just under $1 million, and that would be split 50/50, so it's slightly more than what we were planning on, but basically, a lot of that has to do with the water main improvements and some of the further investigation that we did. So, we expect that, as we talked about before, some of the utility improvements on this project are going to be eligible for ARPA funding that we already have, and so those funds have been generally identified for this project, so we think that that would be that increase, or those additional water main improvements would be funded by, or potentially funded by non-city dollars, because we do have those ARPA grants able to be utilized on this project. Finally, with respect to the conversation forthcoming on the potential ad of sidewalk to Ariel Street, we've estimated the addition of that sidewalk from 11th Avenue to 17th Avenue to be an additional, not accounted for right now, but an add of $275,000. Schedule, we're on schedule to, that open bid should be February 15th. I apologize. That's a typo. But we're looking at a construction start in May, which would be typical, mid-May, depending on when the frost comes out. We'd get them going as soon as we possibly could. We're hoping for a substantial completion, which is not everything, including cleanup and miscellaneous punch lists, but the majority of the work done in October of this year, and our final completion, which would be our final asphalt paving and punch list and cleanup, any sort of landscaping or restoration repair would be as per typical in June of the following year. So, as I mentioned on the front end, the resolution to consider for action, and we can handle it however you want to go, Mr. Mayor, so you could, you could consider the resolution just to authorize ad for bid, and then we can move into the sidewalk discussion or have the sidewalk discussion first, either way, but staff is recommending authorization for ad for bid on the bidding schedule again to try to capture competitive pricing from the contractors, regardless of how we might move on the sidewalk project, because the sidewalk on Ariel would be a part of the Maplewood project, which is a separate schedule. So, I'm here before you on both items, but the sidewalk is independent from the consideration of the resolution to go out for bids on the lion's share of the 2022 project.
Let's get this first part over with first.
If the council so wishes, you certainly could.
Get that over with first, and then we'll talk about the sidewalk after that. Yep, yep.
Morgan, that Ariel, because I love Ariel. I go to come. That's how I get to everywhere, and it's tough right now. It's a full construction, right? You're not just piecemeal. It's going to be good construction on it?
Yes, yeah.
A lot of cars.
It's going to be, so reclamation would be similar to what we did on Helen Street. So, we go all the way through the pavement, and we would have, it's not a full reconstruction, so, but it's definitely at least a 25-year improvement, and we should have very minimal cracking coming, you know, in the years after, so.
And another thing on the handicap, I'm kind of a handicap. Is there going to be as many handicap, like, behind K&amp;J as there is now?
I think we're adding.
That's what, that's what I was...
I don't have the exact number, but we're certainly within the...
I know there was three there behind K&amp;J's, or maybe...
Yeah, the, I mentioned the EV charging stations, and I didn't call it out specifically, but there are a couple islands, if you will, behind K&amp;J, kind of in that area that's closest to Margaret, if you want to say that's closest to downtown, or how somebody might typically access downtown by way of the public sidewalk on Margaret, for example. So, that whole kind of corner would be the highest density of handicap stalls, and it's also kind of where the EV stations are scheduled to be. So, moving from on that west side, on the southernmost island bank, if you will, and then also the northernmost one as well, too. So, that's kind of the concentration of the ADA stalls and the EV stations.
I'm just wondering how many EV stations there will be, or spots?
I believe, so it's been a while since the Electrical Director, Brian Frandl, and I and Public Works met out there to discuss, but I think it started with a discussion of one kiosk, which would serve two vehicles, two stalls, similar to what's here by Public Works, but I think there's an opportunity, maybe, I don't want to qualify or speak for Brian, but to have a second, so potentially, for four vehicles, depending on availability of funds, I think. That's something... of funds, I think. That's something that electrical director would have to make a determination on.
And I think he mentioned, too, that he would put in for future.
Yes, that's for the, yeah. So wiring and conduit, I think he, even if one only went in in the short term, there would be, like, the infrastructure would be in for addition, more addition in the future, I believe.
Great, thank you.
Councilmember Cole?
Just an overreaching question to help me better understand sidewalks. I am of the...
No, we're going to talk about sidewalks now. Unless it's part of...
It has to do with every one of these areas that we've got.
Okay, go ahead.
So, can someone provide me with an understanding of the city's direction or discussion on sidewalks? I'm of the understanding that anytime a major street work is going to be done, that the conversation of sidewalks are on all streets would come up, not just the selected Ariel.
Mr. Mayor, so I can provide a little bit of, at least past practice. There's no set rule at the city, but what we have done is, and past discussions have centered around, when there is a full reconstruct planned, that's an opportunity for a full reset, right? Where you might be improving everything, not just the utilities, but fully rebuilding the road and cutting it down three feet and then building it back up. And so that area where a sidewalk might be, might be totally blown up and excavated anyway. So that's on one end of the scale. And then on the other end of the scale, you might have a maintenance overlay, which is really just focused on the pavement. And we typically would not start looking at, you know, where planned sidewalks might be for that. And then there's, there are some things in between, which is actually, a lot of these projects are in between. So what I can tell you is that certainly on the maintenance overlay projects, we don't start thinking about adding sidewalks or start referencing, you know, the comprehensive plan for planned sidewalks, that sort of thing. If it was a full reconstruct, which none of these actually, in this package are full reconstrucks, we would automatically go to the comprehensive plan and start looking for where there might be sidewalk opportunities. But there's no set rule to say that in, like, a rehabilitation or a reclamation, like I was just describing, like what we did on Helen or what we might do on Ariel Street, that we couldn't or shouldn't look at a sidewalk. So that is kind of, again, no hard and fast rule, but that's the general kind of benchmark or guideline that we followed in the past. So as to be respectful of scope and cost, as might be identified in, you know, capital planning plans, I guess, you know, that you certainly can look at a sidewalk, but then there has to be a discussion that, you know, that would add some cost, and there might be some other impacts that go along with that. So that is actually why, on the other item, I'm back in front of you here today, because it's not a black and white. We're kind of in the middle situation, and I wanted to have that conversation, and we did get some public feedback on the Ariel piece. Now, I will say that, at least to my knowledge, that there are no, I don't feel in my mind that we're missing any opportunities on these other streets and other areas that I'm aware of. We did have one person on 13th that thought there might be some opportunity for some pedestrian improvements there. That was at the public meeting. But again, that 13th is specifically a maintenance overlay street. So we're not even getting into the full-depth pavement there or replacing all of the curb there. So that's a, that might be something that certainly, when the maintenance overlay has lived its life, that, you know, the next kind of step of investment on that roadway, that might be the opportune time. Unless the council wanted to consider standalone sidewalk or pedestrian improvement projects, which can be kind of expensive from a, like, per linear foot standpoint, as opposed to trying to include it in a bigger project.
So the rest of the conversation around sidewalks is on the next section or finish up here?
On the next.
Well, we'll approve one piece, and then we're going to talk about, it was my understanding, we're going to talk about sidewalk on Ariel only, not in general. That was, that was why I chimed in here. So.
And that makes sense, because, I mean, even 13th, you did have a resident.
Yep.
You know, we do have that environmental learning center there.
Right.
And it's a natural walking path.
So I had two areas, and that's why I interrupted at the time. One was 13th, and then I didn't see any pedestrian walking area on the alley and the parking, to service the parking lot. My assumption is it's in the plan, but I just, I just heard overlay the alley. And so that's going to be a high-use parking lot moving forward, and I just want to make sure we've got some type of pedestrian safety determined. And I don't know, I don't know where you'd put a sidewalk. I don't know if you just pave it and paint it. I don't know.
And that kind of goes to my question, too, that I had for you, is as they come out of that parking lot, the natural flow is going to go across the street to the new restaurant.
Uh huh.
Instead of walking all the way down to the light, I think there's going to be a natural flow to, the shortest distance between two points is...
Yeah, and you can't always control where people are going to cross the street. But I will tell you that the safest place is always going to be at the signalized intersection. And I would recommend against, like a mid, if you wanted to call that a mid-block crosswalk, just to connect the dots and make that the shortest point of pedestrian travel from the parking lot to the restaurant, for example, because crosswalks, kind of in those types of areas, tend to give pedestrians a false sense of security. And motorists really, you know, the data shows they don't really truly respect them as much as they should, even though the law says that pedestrians do have the right of way. And so, again, mid-block crosswalks are not recommended, especially when, in this case, now, it is inconvenient to walk, whatever that is, 150 feet north and cross at the crosswalk with a signalized crosswalk. But in terms of giving the public a safe place to cross and what the city's responsibility is in providing those facilities, that certainly is the safest place and where I would recommend anyone, including my children, if they were going to cross the street, cross at the light, right? Now, you know, some people might cross, and they're, hopefully they're looking for traffic and being careful because they're not given that false sense of security, that lots of signs and stripes are going to save them from a vehicle, because, you know, they will not be saved by that. And they certainly have that ability to cross if they're not impeding traffic or if it's not against the rules. But, again, that's, I guess, my recommendation or how I would approach thoughts on how we might get people from the lot to the restaurant, for example, from a designated crosswalk standpoint. Now, within the parking lot, I think you raise a good point. Currently, there's no designated pedestrian way. As with many parking lots, it's set up dimensionally to maximize the number of parking stalls, which was conveyed to me was important because of the need for parking. If we were to add, even if it was not a sidewalk, and I've done this before in parking lots, but if we were to add a, like, a striped way, which we could do, we would probably have to give up some parking stalls. How many? I don't know. If we were to do something along the alley, which is an angle, unfortunately, when you're working with angles on, like, east-west lines, you wind up knocking out, you know, it could be a dozen parking stalls, unfortunately, just by adding a five-foot or a six-foot painted strip where people could walk. So I'm not saying that's not a good idea. We certainly could do that. We could work on an alternate striping plan to be able to convey that, and that's something is, that's an easy change, and I can report back to the council that before we kind of put things in the ground, because the striping actually doesn't happen until the end of the project, right? But we just need to understand that that might impact the amount of parking that we have. And if we're going to provide it along the alleyway, then we also have to think that, you know, as with any parking lot, you're going to have people walking along the drive aisles as they might normally do. And do we want to go a step further and have, you know, walking aisles on each one of those driving aisles as well, too? So it's just a matter of how much is the city interested in providing and what type of reduction or impact, I guess, if you want to call it, reduction or impact to the parking availability is worth considering at this time. Another option to consider is that, you know, striping, restriping can be done in the future, like when we, if we have a resurfacing at, you know, five or seven years or something like that, or even in a shorter term, the lot could be restripped to reconfigure based on kind of pedestrian use patterns and what actually is observed to happening out there, rather than guessing, like, what do we need now, and we're not too sure how people might be walking in and out of the area. And should I add that there, right now, we don't have any facilities or sidewalks within the parking lot?
Councilmember Thorson?
Well, not to beat this to death on the parking, or the sidewalk in the parking lot, but I'm trying to think of another similar-sized parking lot target. I mean, there's no sidewalk that leads you from any particular spot in Target to the store. There's obviously a sidewalk in front of the store. I mean, is that what we're talking about here, is putting a sidewalk along that bank of buildings on that side of the, okay?
Yeah, you could, well, either sidewalk, or as I mentioned, it could be kind of a designated at-grade, like it's just a stripe, but here's where the people walk and here's where the cars drive, that kind of a delineation.
I actually had a question about Flanders. And I understand this isn't a full reconstruction in that this is a maintenance overlay. And I believe there aren't many streets in town that do not have curbs, with the exception of alleyways. And I believe it was 15th that turns into Spirit. Isn't there a section there that doesn't have curbing by the...
There's, yeah, asphalt curb on 15th, and then we have Oak Hill Place, that is that dead end that kind of comes north off of 7th Avenue would be another one.
And so my concern is that in these areas that don't have curbing, well, even asphalt curbing is, seems to be better, but it seems like where there's no curbing, the road deteriorates much quicker than areas that have curbing. So knowing that, how confident are we that redoing that whole stretch of Flanders without putting in any sort of curb and gutter, even if it is a asphalt curb that we see in other areas that are absent of the concrete curb that's the majority of the town? Because all these other areas that we are redoing here have concrete curb and gutter. So how confident are we that redoing that stretch of Flanders, it's going to hold up like these other areas?
So, two things. So number one, the, well, first, before I get into that, I will say that, so there will be on Flanders, some limited areas where we do need to add kind of some bituminous curb edging to direct the water and keep it going where we want it to go, as opposed to just let it meander into people's front yards. So that will be a part of it. So there will be some asphalt curb in limited places. I can't tell you exactly where, but I know the designers are already including that in the project. So that will help, number one. Number two, the soils on Flanders, you know, in just terms of looking what they, looking at what they built the road on originally and how much pavement or roadway that they put on top of it, there is not a lot there. So the reason why it's so bad is that it was kind of insufficiently built from the first place. So to answer your question about how confident are we, I think that because what we're doing is we are going to be doing a, it's not just a simple overlay. We're doing something that is to try to get it as cost-effectively as possible back to our current standard without kind of redoing everything. I'm fairly confident that it's going to be at least on par with all of our other maintenance overlays, which we've been saying that if we are lucky that, you know, we're looking at a 10- to 15-year, and maybe we get a little bit more, maybe we get lucky on some of these, it's a 20-year investment, even though it's a fairly minimal investment in the pavement. So I'm confident that we're doing, we're not throwing money away. You know, I wouldn't recommend something to you guys if I didn't think it was going to stand the test. If we were to add concrete curb and gutter, would that be better? Yes. We would be adding a fairly significant chunk of additional investment in that. I don't know exactly what it would be, but it would be double-digit percentage increase in terms of whatever the cost is right now for that improvement on Flanders. So I'm comfortable recommending it to the council. We certainly could have gone over and above or another step. But again, knowing that we are, for those roadways, for the maintenance overlay roadways, we are working within Public Works' already identified, pre-identified budget. You know, I can't in good conscience just kind of keep spending money out of there otherwise, because they have other roads that they need to do on their own this year as well, too. It's not just about what's included in this bid package here. So those were kind of the factors that went into it for my timeframe. But again, to answer your question, I'm confident that it'll be a good investment. We will get as good, maybe even better, life out of what we're planning there compared with the other maintenance overlay streets that we've done in the city, similar to, like, 15th by Richardson and some of the other streets that we've kind of used a similar approach to, even though we're not adding curb and gutter. Concrete curb and gutter, sorry.
Talking a lot of roads here. So you're pretty confident you could put together a Plan B for the parking lot for a pedestrian stripe?
I'm sure we can come up with something. Yep.
To me, it's...
The alley or some, something.
It's an alleyway, and you get traffic that's, it's almost like a road, that section there. So if it, I guess, get a proposal for that.
Yeah, no, that's not a problem. And if we're lucky, we can even, you know, include it as an addendum to the bid package, and I can report back to you guys when we receive the bids. I don't expect it to be a huge delta in cost, again, especially if we go the striping route, but, because if you start adding monolithic concrete, it would be more expensive and also might kind of mess up our drainage. So I guess, but we'll evaluate both options and see what we can come up with.
Okay.
I mean, that's huge.
I'll let you know what the per parking lot cost is, or per stall cost is. Yeah, we can, we can look at it in those terms.
All right. Any other questions from Morgan in regards to the, to that? If not, the motion is for resolution approving plans and specifications and ordering advertisement for bids for the 2022 street and utility improvements project.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Cole.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Wong. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pos, motion carries, and then we'll talk about sidewalks.
Yeah, so I'll just, for the benefit of the council and the public, this is in your packet, but this is a summary of all of the questions and answers and some of the discussion items that we had at our virtual open house, which was fairly well-attended. At the very top there, we conducted a poll, and we talked with everybody who was in attendance about the potential for a sidewalk on Ariel.
How many people were in attendance? Was it quite a few or?
Not, yeah, I was going to say between around 25, not quite 30, which is...
Significant.
Good, yeah. I think there's a fair number of properties, but, and we had representatives from, like, the apartments on 10th there, and so it was, it was a decent representation. At any rate, to summarize, I mean, everybody who was in attendance had the opportunity to answer the poll. It wasn't just specifically limited to the people that lived there. But by the numbers, 11% of the people who live on Ariel, you know, said that they would prefer a sidewalk. There were 5% that preferred not to have a sidewalk. And then, you know, these other people that lived in and around the area, some folks on 13th, 14th, I don't know where, but in that area, and people were kind of putting that in their chat bar comments, 26% responded that they don't live there, but they would be in favor of a sidewalk. So there's some general interest in that. The other thing that I would point out for, let's see, I can do it on this screen for the council's benefit, is that Ariel Street, if you can see on the left side of your screen here, this pink line between 11th and 12th. Ariel Street, if you can see on the left side of your screen here, this pink line between 11th Avenue and 17th Avenue, that actually is, according to the comp plan, what is called a tier three. So not the most important planned sidewalk out there, but a third tier of possibility for some sort of pedestrian facilities to be considered at some point. As I mentioned before, like if we were going to fully reconstruct that, this road, that might be an automatic to consider including in the project because we're kind of in between. The approach that I've looked at with respect to handling how we might do this is on the east side of the road, I don't have a good picture, but on the east side of Ariel, there is a stripe, there's a striped shoulder. It's about a four-foot or a five-foot wide striped shoulder. Right now, anecdotally, people do in the area walk on the side of the road and they use that shoulder, similar to, I think, other roads. Helen, Helen has a striped shoulder for most of it, if I remember correctly. And I think there's some other streets throughout the city that have that kind of, it's not, it's not a striped shoulder that's wide enough to park a car in, so there's no, no parking that's allowed there, but it's, you know, enough to, for someone, if they wanted to use that, they could walk on it. So again, my approach, if we were to include a sidewalk, again, at cost of approximately $275,000, would be similar to what the city did on Lake Boulevard, so sidewalk right off the edge of a curb and the curb line would be set kind of right where that stripe is. So there wouldn't be a five-foot shoulder anymore. Instead, the curb line would be moved over. We'd have to put concrete curb in all the way from 11th to 17th, and then we'd have a five or a six-foot, I, I guessed or planned on a six-foot concrete sidewalk, again, right off that curb. So it would look similar to what Lake Boulevard looks like. And I guess the other thing that I can mention is I did share with the people that were in attendance at that meeting the, the city ordinance that requires homeowners who, unless there's exemption given by the city council, but the homeowners that have sidewalk in front of their home are responsible for snow removal on a sidewalk per, per ordinance. I guess downtown is also an exception as well, too. But I did mention that so that the folks that were at the meeting at least heard that and understood that as we were getting into the poll and the discussion. So, you know, I think that I don't have a recommendation for or against, it's an opportunity for the council to consider for a cost of $275,000. If the council wanted, I would put that in the project. Another option that the council could consider is to direct staff to include it in the project as an alternate that could be awarded, or we, you know, we could make a determination later that is just kind of moving it down the road a little bit, but that would be, we've done that before as an option to consider, you know, what is the cost? I'm estimating $275,000. We can see what the bids are, and we can make that decision and give that direction to the City of Maplewood before they actually award, they're going to give us the opportunity to review the bids and the costs on Ariel Street, regardless of whether there's a sidewalk or not. So that would be something that would be in front of you, I think, on a March timeframe, if I'm remembering correctly. So that, I'll stand for any questions, but that's kind of the lay of the land with respect to this opportunity for a sidewalk.
We've gone down that road before, no pun intended.
Yes, we've gone down that sidewalk before, yes.
Any questions for Morgan?
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a question? So on the, if we went the alternate route, is there any downside to doing that as opposed to rolling it in to the, to the full bid?
Like as a bid alternate?
Yes.
No, there would not be any sort of disadvantage from a pricing standpoint. The contractor is really considering what it would, what it would cost or what he would request for compensation to do that as a part of the overall project, and so it's not, it's a, if it's deleted, then everything else is independent, so you know, we would, we would set it up such that if there were, if he wanted to consider a mobilization or something, we would have that all separated into that alternate. So it wasn't built such that there would be any influence or disadvantage to the base project, if you will, the base bid.
Thank you.
So no downside to do the alternate right now? I mean, we can always back off at the, at the bid process?
Yeah, when, so I don't know if we need to do it by resolution, but the, the action would be, again, on a March timeframe, after Maplewood has received their bids, they would give us an opportunity to concur with the bids and we can give them direction, yes, sidewalk or no sidewalk, I guess, at that point.
So the motion could be an alternate to the bid package to include a sidewalk?
Direct, yeah, direct staff to include a sidewalk alternate in the Maplewood Ariel Street project. Something like that would be fine, if that's what the council wants to do.
One quick question.
Councilmember Thorson.
So why, why is the sidewalk not also, I mean, has Maplewood already discussed this and they said, no, not on our side?
Oh. They didn't say no, they said that they were not interested in contemplating sidewalk on their side on Ariel. However, they are including sidewalk on the north side of 11th Avenue from Ariel to points west, because on the north side, they don't have sidewalk. On the south side of 11th Avenue, they do have sidewalk, like we do. So they are including some sidewalk in the project. They just did not have, like, we've got it in our plan to consider a sidewalk, they, they didn't, they have not identified that for themselves.
Because the sidewalk on, but on 11th is on the, what direction is that? It's on the side that Target's on.
Yeah, south side.
So the sidewalk on the North St. Paul's side would not be connecting directly to a sidewalk because there's no sidewalk running on that side of the road.
Correct, not directly, but there is a, an existing crosswalk at Ariel because there's a bus stop on the north, on the northeast corner there.
In the same situation on, on 17th there, the sidewalk is on the opposite side, so
Yep.
I mean, it it just, to me, that's confusing, like we talk about connectivity and how we want things to connect, and we're having a sidewalk on our side of the road that doesn't directly connect to a sidewalk. Yes, it's across the street, but to me, it would, seems like it makes more sense when we're doing this to have them directly connected, so you know, if Maplewood is going to have sidewalks running towards White Bear Avenue on either sides of those roads, it seems to make sense to have that sidewalk on that side of the road, especially given there's a huge section of that road that has no homes on it because there's that, you know, that swamp area. So it seems like the impact on the homeowners would be far less on their side. Now, I know they have different rules than us and they probably are getting assessed for things like that, and we don't.
Yep.
But I don't know. I mean, I, I guess I'm not opposed to including it as an, an additional amendment and we can have discussion about it further.
So motion would be, unless there's any other questions, motion would be to add this as an alternate to the bid package for the Ariel construction.
Maplewood project, yep.
Yep.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Cole, second by Councilmember Wong. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pos, motion carries.
Thank you, Morgan.
Yes, they'll be coming back to us.
Yep.
Thank you, Morgan. City manager, start.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We had item, let's see here, F removed from the consent agenda. And this was the annual review of the attendance of members of boards and commissions. And to give you a little context about why we're discussing this, in the city code, it states that the council shall conduct an annual review of the attendance of members of boards and commissions established by the council. To my knowledge and to staff's knowledge, this hasn't been conducted on an annual basis in recent memory. It was brought to staff's attention, and so we did pull together the, the attendance of the commissions for you, and that's an attachment there. In terms of the attendance expectations, the city code goes on to say that duly-appointed members of boards and commissions shall be required to attend no less than half of the official meetings held within a given calendar year unless specifically excused by the chair of such a board or commission and said excused absences were noted in the minutes. Failure to attend shall be considered as a formal notice of resignation. Again, I don't know what the, how strictly staff has been following this practice in terms of staff liaisons to commissions. The staff, the, the minutes have not been reflecting whether absences were excused or not excused. There's been the presumption that they were excused. And we, we really haven't even defined what constitutes an excused absence. The way staff had been interpreting an excused absence in the past was that it's, it was a, an absence with advanced notice. And if an absence were with advanced notice, it was, it was considered to be excused. You know, staff really doesn't want to get into the business of, of determining whether an absence is justified or not, and that's the reason we've done it in that way. This gets a little bit more complicated in that there are some city commissions that are established by state statute in addition to the city code. Those would be the Planning Commission, the Economic Development Authority, and the Housing and Redevelopment Authority. Now, because the Housing and Redevelopment Authority in North St. Paul is, you know, the, the membership is coincidental to the city council, I, I don't think that that's an issue. But with the EDA and the Planning Commission, there are, especially with the EDA, there's a lot of language in the state statute about the expectations. Let me find it here really quick. For the EDA, a commissioner, again, according to state statute, may be removed by the city council for three reasons: inefficiency, that's not defined, neglect of duty, again, not defined, or misconduct in office. It goes on to say that a commissioner shall be removed only after a hearing. A copy of the charges must be given to the commissioner at least 10 days before the hearing. So on and on, there's like due process, I would say, in the EDA. The, the Planning Commission, I could not find the same level of detail. I'm a little bit familiar with the state statute with regards to the Planning Commission, so I, I think it's in there somewhere. State statutes aren't always easy to find exactly what you're looking for. The other commissions being, you know, arts and culture, parks and recreation, a missing one. But the other commissions that are only established by the city council, you know, the state statute wouldn't touch those. So we did our best to report to you the absences of commission members. We did note also that, and this wasn't any, you know, in-depth analysis, I just simply asked all of the liaisons whether they had heard any complaints from the public or from the chair about any particular commission members, and the answer was no, so we noted that as well. So I, I think the only recommendation is that you conduct an annual review. I don't believe the, let me go back and look at this again. Yep. The code simply states that you would conduct an annual review, not that you would approve one, not that you would take action, simply that you conduct the review. My feeling is that this meets that requirement, but I would certainly take any policy direction you would, you'd provide me.
I think typically we would hear from the committee, committee chairs, or if there's a problem with, with a committee member. I mean, that's kind of my understanding how things have worked in the past. I know I did forward this to the city attorney and as part of our meetings with the committees and commissions, probably in February, we're planning on having a meeting with the chairs, and this could be a good discussion for them to, you know, bring up at that time. And moving forward, you know, what is the chair's responsibility? Do you have a member that is, you know, negligent or what have you, you know? That could be an opportunity at that time for them to understand that, you know, they should bring it to us for annual, annual review. That's my take.
Councilmember Thorson.
Yeah, so I pulled this and just, that was one of my questions I had is, you know, what's an excused versus unexcused? And, you know, how many, I mean, there's no indication if there are any unexcused. I would imagine that all of these are excused under the guise of that they just identified that they were going to be absent ahead of time. I think that's where that automatic resignation comes into play, is if someone just, no communication, they just don't show up, no, no, people reach out, they don't respond back. If there's six absences, they've, and no one can contact them, then they've, in a sense, resigned. I think that's in the spirit of that. To the, the comment about the, you know, complaints, is there, is, do we have any process for people to submit complaints? Or is that always just done through the chair, or?
I'm assuming through the chair. I mean, that's, in the past, that's typically the chair will be, will come to the council or come to somebody to complain that, you know, we have a member here not showing up.
Yeah, my experience is that, that typically it'd be the chair or a, if another member of a, of a committee or a commission had some issues, they would either bring that to the chair's attention or perhaps the staff liaison's attention. You know, certainly staff could note if there were performance issues on a commission, if there were attendance issues on a commission. Again, I asked all of the commission liaisons if they'd had that experience. And so we would always take note of, of staff's thought on that as well.
I remember when I first got on the Park and Rec, there was someone on the Park and Rec that never showed up. And that was my question, well, why is this person even on the, on the? Well, we got, brought it to the council and they did get rid of him, so it was.
Yeah, and so that, I mean, that's just, when I'm reading this, I just had a, you know, a question about, well, it says at the bottom, what's our procedure for reporting concerns or issues? Does the public aware of that? I guess an example might be if there's a member of the public who attends meetings and they're, you know, mistreated, is there a procedure for them to report? I think, you know, naturally you would think they would send an email to you or the council, but I don't know if there's something specific, or perhaps they want to make their complaint anonymous. And we have tip line, or a, a process where people can make anonymous complaints on the website, but if that's just some, a policy that we have, if it's outlined, that's always just a question, it's no specific instance. On a personal note, you know, I, I resigned from the EDA earlier this year because I I came to a realization that I was going to have a real difficult time attending those meetings at their designated time, 3:00 in the afternoon. And rather than ask to change the schedule and have everyone else, I just said, I can't make these meetings. I've tried, you know, I'm, I'm going to have to resign. You know, you see someone who misses seven meetings. To me, that's kind of stands out. I understand, you know, there's, you know, things happen. We're in the middle of a pandemic. There's family issues that can arise, what have you, but, you know, I think the spirit of this is not that we're trying to play principal or teacher here and, and mark you off as absent and, and kick you off the commission. It's that you look at that and you say, well, the, your role here, you've been asked to serve on this commission. It's important enough that you attend the meetings on a regular basis. And if you're, if you're missing an exceeding amount, maybe you should question your involvement. Now, you know, we can get into excused and unexcused, you know, oh, I'm sick, or, you know, I have to run home to pick up the kids last minute versus, oh, I'm planning a six-month vacation. You know, and then when I come back, I'm going to go on another six-month vacation, you know, those sorts of things. To me, well, you know, your commitment is to at least attend on a regular basis. If you can't make that commitment, it shouldn't take council removal or these kinds of issues. That's all I point that out. And I don't know, and I don't really care to know what these absences are, but I just think it's important that we look at this on an annual basis, and it probably should be looked at closer by the commissions themselves and looking at, hey, if we've got a looking at, hey, if we've got a member who's constantly absent, whether it's excused or unexcused, maybe we need to have a, a more in-depth conversation with that individual and, and see if they're really committed to this role we've asked them to serve, so.
And Mr. Mayor, I would just repeat what you said, that we, we plan on having a commission kind of, a mission chair workshop or retreat or something, and we are going to let them know that this is, that this has not been happening in the past, this review, but it will, will be happening in the future, and they should let their members know that there will be kind of a review of their attendance, and that in and of itself might cause people to, to reflect in the way you were talking about and self-police.
Any other questions? Not, we have, from the consent agenda, we have the 2021 annual review of the attendance of members of boards and commissions. Motion to approve that.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Thorson, second by Councilmember Wong. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ours, motion carries, and then we have the 2022 commission appointments, resolution approving appointments to the commission in authority for 2022. Did I say that right? I don't, hold on a second. Resolution approving appointments to commissions in authority, I'm sorry, for 2022. Your motion. Moved by Councilmember Peterson.
Is item G here, we're talking about here?
Yep.
Okay. So I, I pulled this item because I want to have.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought we were done, okay.
Sorry, it's all right, yeah. So separate item. You know, I, I raised this concern last year, and I have in the past, you know, my stance hasn't changed, so I'm, you know, broken record here, but I'm just going to mention it again. I don't object necessarily to any particular individual being recommended for appointment, and what I object to is, is the process here, and, and it's, you know, I, I understand that our code, it states that the mayor will appoint an individual, but it takes the council to pass that individual. So I look at it as the council's appointing the individual, and, you know, we're, we're put into a place here where there could be a vacancy, or someone resigns, whatever, what's the process behind that individual coming to the council for recommendation for approval? You know, we don't know who applied, how many people applied, we don't know what the criteria was for selecting that individual, we're just left with consent agenda item or a brief discussion at a workshop, here's who's presented. So to me, it feels like it puts council members under pressure to just rubber stamp it and go along with whatever's recommend, recommended by the mayor. That's not to say we don't respect the mayor's process, but what I've just pointed out is that we don't know the process, and so I'm, I guess my objection is that I don't agree, agree with the process. I think we should have discussion about how we can change that process so it's a little more transparent, and that's why I plan on voting no.
Mr. Mayor, I would just say that as Councilmember Thorson said, the, the language from the code says, regular members of boards and commissions shall be appointed by the mayor with the approval of the city council. That kind of language, in my, my experience in other communities, has meant pretty similar to what is happening here, that the mayor puts forward names, and let's say, just for example, if there were only one commission member up as opposed to a slate, the mayor might say, well, I'm, I'd like to appoint John Doe with the approval of the city council, and if John Doe gets voted down, they say, people say no, then the, the mayor would then say, okay, I have a second choice, I'd like to put forward, and it's Jane Doe, and then the council would vote. That's my experience when the language is such that the mayor makes an appointment with the approval of the city council. In that context, I think the word approval is almost like using the word ratification. It's ratified by the city council in, in practice. I don't know if City Attorney Koch has other experiences in other communities, sorry to put you on the spot.
No, no, no problem at all. From the, from the language of that code section, the mayor has a particular responsibility that's individualized to him, and then you're right, the council does have their side of the coin as well. But yeah, processes like these, it's, it's fairly common to, to happen like this, but it is the council's duty to vote as well, to approve.
Any other discussion? If not, motion for resolution approving appointments to commissions in authority for 2022, and I take it that these are all appointments, people who are just extending their.
Yes, these are all renewals.
These are just people who are, there isn't anybody new on this list. Moved by Councilmember Peterson.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Cole. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ours.
Nay.
Motion carries. Turnover to City Manager Stark.
Just one thing I wanted to clarify on, at, at the last meeting, we'd set Thursday, January 27th as our council retreat. In my notes, I had two different times, one place I had written 4:30 and one place I had written 4:00, so I just wanted to double check and see if folks had a.
I have 4:30.
I have 4:30.
Okay, thank you. And what I'd like to do going forward is, perhaps not every meeting, but many or most meetings would be to have a report from another city department. So I've asked Public Works, we've got Director Ron Ritchie here, and I believe Supervisor Randy Miller is here as well, and I'd ask them to come and talk about winter operations in Public Works, so I don't know if you want to be here, up there, wherever.
This is a bad spot, but. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers.
Welcome.
Just here, like, City Manager Stark said, just to give a little report on Public Works, what's going on, kind of what we're doing right now. Obviously, snow plowing, you know, dealing with these snow events that we have or been having. A couple of things we can talk about is like hours when we plow, that kind of varies, it depends on when the snow is going to end, when, when is going to be the best time for our guys to be out and be safe and not, you know, dealing with traffic and different things like that. I, I guess kind of a good example, let's say it snows during the day, it starts, it snows all day. We don't like to go out and plow, like during rush hour time, or, you know, we try to get the roads cleared for people going to work or coming home from work. So typically what we do, we have some main roads that we, in town, we call Margaret, what else?
11th.
Margaret, 11th, kind of some of the main thoroughfares that we have, we call them our mains. We'll have the guys usually go out, have them plow the main roads at the end of the day, and then we'll make a time to come back in at 2:00 in the morning, or when traffic is, you know, off the roads where we can get to everything, or hopefully garbage cans are in where we can actually do a, a full plow. Kind of, I don't know if anyone, any of you had noticed, maybe we have some different color salt that we have in our trucks, white, the white salt, or we'll, we'll have a salt that looks brown. The brown salt is something, it's, we mix ourself, we have beet juice that we add to the salt, which works at a lot lower temperature. Regular salt works down to about 10 degrees, after that, it really doesn't do, do a whole lot, and if we put this beet juice in it, it works down to about 10, about 10 below, where we can, we can use that. So we have two different piles, we mix it ourself because it saves some, saves some money. You can order like a pretreated salt, but we mix it ourselves at the shop, and then we can kind of control how much we need or when we think we'll need that.
Is a beet sauce, sauce. Salt, can you store that as beet salt? It doesn't break down with, with?
We remix it at the beginning of the year, but it's all still there. Yeah, if, if it's, if it sits for the summer, it'll, it'll kind of lose its color and drain to the bottom, but you can kind of remix it and, you know, just kind of put it back in. So just some notes if you see that, and just kind of reminder to residents, and you guys can help us with this, you know, when we do plow during the day or when we have to plow, you know, garbage cans, if you can keep them in your driveways, you know, it seems like one resident will put their, you know, cans out in the street, and then, then you can look down the whole block and the whole block has their garbage cans out, you know, and a lot of times, you know, the people will call in and say, hey, you guys are three feet away from the curb, you know, in a lot of instances, that's, that's kind of the case with that. Water main breaks, we have seven, we've had seven water main breaks so far this winter. On average, I'd say, going through the years, we probably have, you know, 10 a year, sometimes we have 14, sometimes we might have four. Causes of water main breaks, I don't know, we have older pipes in the ground, but, you know, it seems like it always happens before, like it snows or while it's snowing.
Christmas Eve.
Christmas Eve, Friday night, you know, something like that. You know, they say change in temperature, change in pressures when snow comes in, I mean, who really knows what it, what it is, but, you know, with that, if you see anything like, if we have a water main break in any county road, McKnight, 17th Avenue, something like that, we are required to fill that water main break in with concrete. If it's a, you know, blacktop road, we saw cut it, we have to pour concrete in there to get through the winter, so it's maintained through the winter, and then in the spring, you'll see that we have to go, have to go in there, that concrete needs to be torn out, and then it needs to be paved per the county standards. So just kind of wanted to bring up a little note to you guys on that, if you, hey, it's all fixed, and then also in the spring, we're digging that same hole out, we have to replace all that concrete with what the road material is and per the county specs for that base. Other than that, maintaining the ice rinks, you know, in the warmer weather here, they've been getting used when it was colder out, you know, they weren't getting used that much. We, we tried to hire some rink attendants, we posted that, we had two girls that were sisters that, you know, wanted to do it, and with the timing of it and with when they could work, they could only work till January 11th and they were going back to college, so we would have had about four days worth of time where we could have had them in there. So we just kind of decided to keep the, the warming house closed, just so people didn't get, hey, why is it closed, it was open, so that. Building maintenance, keeping the buildings running here, they, with heat, and we've had some issues with furnaces and stuff, but we're working on trying to get some contracts together with some mechanical contractors for the normal maintenance on this stuff. Student built house, I'll leave that up to you if you want to talk about that. Student built house, it got roofed last Thursday, which is nice because now it's kind of dried in. You'll drive by, you'll see that there's no windows in it, pretty much all the framing is done in it. Windows are out till March 3rd, so, and windows are a super tough thing to get, you know, but we're going to keep moving forward, we got a, we got, you know, bids for plumbing and electrical, we pretty much got those things finalized and got those contractors on board, so they'll be able to start doing some stuff, you know, and some tree trimming. And I guess I'm open for any questions you guys might have or comments or?
Any questions for Ron or Randy? Councilmember Thorson.
Just one comment in defense of some homeowners, because I've seen this happen, and it's personally happened to me. Put the trash can on your driveway.
Yep.
It gets picked up, and when you get home, it's out in the street. Now, I don't know if that's the driver or someone walking by or whatever, but I think, you know, and not in all instances our residents are doing it, but I agree, you know, it's a, I mean, we just, newsletter and, you know, social media posts, just reminding, and I've seen those reminders too, that it, you know, I think people just get into a habit of thinking that, oh, I have to put this in an area where they can get it, because if they can't, then they're going to skip me, but, you know, that arm can extend way out. I've seen some people, they'll go ahead and dig a section of their yard out to put the trash cans there, that seems to help, but that's just another thing to shovel out and whatever, but yeah, we all need to be mindful of that.
Yeah, and, you know, our main goal, I mean, we want to get the road cleared as best as we possibly can, we want to get as close to the curb as we can without knocking mailbox down, but, you know, that, that's our main goal, and, you know, it, I, I get, you know, people, it just seems like, you know, some blocks, you can look down and the whole streets out, you know, their trash cans are out there, and I get it, you know, they don't have a place to put it up on their boulevard, but just a kind of friendly reminder that, you know, if we can do that, it'd be great, so.
Just huge thank you to you guys, you do a phenomenal, phenomenal job keeping the streets clear. You know, they, plow usually comes by about the time I'm out there, and try to walk out and say hi or say thank you or whoever's behind the plow, it's usually the pickup trucks that, they're a little lower to my level that I get to say hi to, but, but awesome job, and a, and a big thank you to you guys too for, my phone starts to ring around Christmas, the kids are back home from school, they're back home, I get some of the hockey dads calling, they want those rinks flooded. Nine winters out of 10, the weather doesn't cooperate very well, but, but I know I sent you guys an email on it as well, and just thank you again for doing everything you can to, to keep those rinks up and going.
You're welcome, and just a comment on that, we try, we do our best to try to get those things flooded as soon, or, you know, get ice built, we always have a second shift, one of the guys will always volunteer, work a second shift so we can flood at night, you know, to try to get some of those extra floods in, but, you know, in the, even in December, if that sun comes out even for four hours during the day, it burns off that north side of the rink so quick, but we do our best to try to get those, you know, flooded as quickly as we can, and I know a lot of times it seems late, but I can tell you that we are on it, you know, it's definitely on our radar, you know, as a priority, so.
And even North, North St. Paul Hockey, when the youth association was around, didn't hit the rinks until usually January anyways, because it's too iffy in December, but thank, but thank you for not giving up on the rinks and keeping it up, they do get used.
Thank you.
Yeah, and, and thank you for doing all of the work on the community center and maintaining heat for everyone, I think.
And in this building, yeah.
Very grateful for that. And then my second question is, can I go on a ride along in the snowplow?
You most certainly can.
Okay.
Do you want to do it during the day, or do it?
2:00.
You're going to go at 2:00 in the morning?
I'll think about it.
No, if we, if, I don't know what the best way, or, I mean, I guess, give me your contact information and give me, or send me an email, when are some good times for you, and if it falls in that time, we'll, we'll definitely, you can send someone over to pick you up, or you can meet us down here, most definitely so.
I would recommend the full experience and do the 2:00 AM ride along, if it's available.
Then I got a snow blower, do you need experience with a snow blower?
Yeah.
That'd be good.
Yep, well, so unless you guys have any other questions.
Thank you, both of you and, and your team down there, you guys do a great job, and I know those water main breaks, I just can't imagine the amount of time and effort that goes into those things.
Yeah, it's.
I see the trucks, I just shudder.
I just, yeah, and, you know, it's, you know, Caesar, or the people that clean the buildings here, a couple different times, or one time this year, one time last year, he came by, he bought coffee and breakfast sandwiches for all the guys and whatever, and he was like, you guys, you know, it's so cold out here, so, I mean, that, he's been great with that kind of stuff, but, you know, it's.
Well, you might have a lot of coffee showing up now at these water main breaks.
No, but, all right, thanks, unless you guys have anything else or any other questions?
No.
All right.
Thank you, Ron.
Thank you both.
City Manager Stark?
That concludes the city manager's report.
All right. Reports of council and commissions and committees, Councilmember Cole.
Don't have a whole lot to, to report on tonight, next Park and Rec meeting is tomorrow night, hits 6:30 here in the building. EDA had a meeting on January the 11th, we, there was a presentation given by an outside group interested in the development of 2395 Margaret, it was very interesting and, and well thought out. Next EDA meeting is February 8th at 3:00 in the Sandberg Room.
Thank you, Councilmember Wong.
The planning commission met the first Thursday of this month, and as you know, we have a vacancy available for the public to participate in the commission, so that is out there now. And then we discussed the materials for the outdoor seating.
And then we discussed the materials for the outdoor seating, and we're looking at something a little bit more durable, perhaps something more of the commercial grade. And then in terms of design, a lot of that may fall on the, the owners, the business owners. We also discussed the sign ordinance, we're still going through that, we're just trying to make it clean and reasonably enforceable as well. As for the, the Arts and Culture Commission, they're still working on the bylaws, and the next meeting is tomorrow. Thanks.
Councilmember Peterson.
Yes, the League of Minnesota Cities, we had our 4M, they call it the 4M meeting, and it was the trust, the insurance trust, and they're seeing a lot of the PTSD with the police, so that really takes a hit for the insurance. On an average officer, police officer for 20-year career, he could, he or she could experience over 100 incidents of PTSD, and I was pretty amazed by that. I mean, it could be minor, major, or whatever, so it's a concern, and they're aware of it, and they're trying to work things out, but it's, it's a tough, it's a tough one. I was invited to an open forum roundtable for the LMC, and I got to brag about North St. Paul, and I do very well about bragging about my hometown. They gave me about 10 minutes, and I filled it up, and they asked me questions, and just what's happening, and, you know, they've seen things in the paper, and so that was a very, a very fun experience for me. And then we talked about the mental health, emphasis on how bad that is with the youth in our schools, and then the crisis plan, and then our COVID protocols, so it was kind of a, it was about an hour long, but it encompassed a lot of cities, so I was glad to be part of that. And the business association, this luncheon was canceled last week because of COVID, and I think it's on hold right now, I don't know about February, but just going to be waiting to see how this next surgical, so that's all I have.
Councilmember Thorson?
The Master Redevelopment Plan Committee will meet on Monday, January 31st at 6:30 here at City Hall.
Okay, thank you. General Business, oh, no, actually, I do have a couple things. One is, I attended the Regional Council of Mayors that was held out in Eden Prairie, and Chief Madin Roth also attended, but the meeting got pushed further in the day, so Chief had to leave. But at that meeting, the first session of the meeting was discussion about affordable housing in the Twin Cities area, and how far behind we are in regards to the affordable housing in the Twin Cities. Twin Cities has one of, one of the top 0% vacancy rates in the, in the country, which is crazy, you know, they like to see, a healthy is about 5 to, 5 to 8% vacancy rate. We have 0% vacancy rate in the Twin Cities area. That's why you see so much housing being built right now, and they can't catch up, it's going to be a long time before we even catch up to that number that they're looking for. The second session that we had was with, we had representatives, we had Mayor Frye from Minneapolis, we had John Choi from Ramsey County Attorney, we had Sheriff Hutchison from Hennepin County, we also had Mark Freeman, the Hennepin County Attorney, and a lot of the police chiefs were in attendance with the Hennepin and Ramsey County. And this, and the, most of the discussion was on carjackings and increased catalytic converter theft, and the frustration that the police chiefs have that they can't prosecute a lot of these individuals. Some of these individuals have 18 convictions, and they get put back on the street. That's the frustration that the sheriff and the police chiefs are having, that they can't keep these kids, most of them are delinquents, off the streets. So it was a big discussion. We're going to have a follow-up meeting with Ramsey County, myself, and other Ramsey County mayors, and John Choi, the Ramsey County Attorney, and the police chiefs to talk about this subject in regards to catalytic converters and car thefts. With that, general business, Councilmember Cole. Councilmember Wong.
Nothing, thank you.
Councilmember Peterson.
This was kind of late, I wanted to mention it last time. It was really neat to see all the holiday lights, I got to take the grandkids out, and we were rating the, you know, the top ones, but there was a heck of a lot of them, it was really fun to see, and I want to thank the citizens for participating in that holiday light, and just, you know, lighting up the town, it was very nice. I got to speak at, David McClung, he was Arden Hills City Council Member, his funeral was on Saturday, so I got to speak at it. I knew David through the Ramsey County League, and at 53, it's pretty young to pass away, but, so I want to extend my sympathies to his family, so that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Thorson?
Just one item, we got an email this afternoon from County, Washington County Commissioner, Stan Karwowski, is that how you pronounce his name?
Yep.
I'm going to read the whole thing, but just kind of give an update to residents who are maybe following along with this. Says he's been working with Ramsey County Commissioner Reinhardt, MinDOT, and Senator Uyghur's office on Highway 36 and 120, and just the whole 120 corridor. They've got a preliminary estimate of $50 million to do a, I believe that's just the interchange portion of 120 and 36. They're working on developing some sort of resolution of support that communities can draft and approve to help expedite this, and they're also looking at creating a Century Avenue Coalition, and they would be looking for member communities' representation on that. So he also stated they'll be giving additional updates as the year goes on, but that's good news to hear that that's moving along, and that it wasn't just an item we talk about, and then five years later, we talk about again, and again and again, and next, you know, it's 30 years we've been talking about this, so I think it's pretty obvious that 36 is getting a lot of attention with all the development in, in Wisconsin, and the bridge being done, and all these interchanges, so I think there's some hope here that this will get on their schedule at some point here, and that project will be done sooner than later.
Positive momentum moving forward with it.
And that's all I have.
Great, thank you. What I have, tonight, we, before the meeting, we had a swearing-in of a few of our police officers. We had actually two new officers, a new CSO and a promotion, and we have, the promotion is with Amber Decore, she was promoted from officer to sergeant. We had two new officers, Brandon Bowe and Megan McKay, and our newest community service officer is Jonah Baumchill. If you see new faces out in the police department, those are the new faces, and it was a great time seeing them, seeing them tonight with their families and friends, and it was an honor to be able to swear them in, and we welcome them to our police community. Also, we did have, Councilmember Peterson mentioned, there was a good article in regards to North St. Paul and the Star and Tribute, Star and Tribune a couple weeks ago, and it talked about North St. Paul, and what North St. Paul is going through right now, the transition from what I called it was Renaissance, or legacy, or not legacy, but just, yeah, Renaissance, that's moving forward. So good, good publicity, and we've got a lot of phone calls from people, outside people thanking us for what we're doing in North St. Paul. So with that, that's all I have. Anything else? Anybody miss anything? If not, Leah, thank you very much for your input tonight, and.
No problem, Mayor, you're welcome.
At this time, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Cole.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Wong, any discussion? Not all, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, we are adjourned at 8:00.